We will call to.
Ron's on.
Now I'm on. All right, we'll call to order the meeting for the Shenandoah City Council Wednesday, December 9th, 2020, 7:00 PM. Called to roll and noticed that everybody is here, including Councilman Fletcher, who is COVID-free, and we're happy to hear that, but he is heavy to grandchildren now. So congratulations on the extra grandchildren, extra members of the family. You'll run home and start changing diapers after the meeting?
Uh, yeah.
Okay. We're going to stand and say the Pledge of Allegiance, and then if you'd like to stay standing, we'll say a quick invocation.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic where it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Honored Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Dear Lord, we come before you tonight, and as always, we start by saying thank you. Thank you for your love, for your grace, for your forgiveness. Thank you for everybody that showed up here tonight, our city council members, our city staff, our strategic partners, everybody that plays a hand in just helping make this city the best place that it can be to live, to work, to play, and pray. We come up here each and every night on these council meetings to just try to do our best job to make our way through these agendas and do the best job that we can for our residents and our businesses and make this the best place we can. We hope that you will help guide us through this agenda tonight, and we do all these things to honor you. We pray these things in your son's name and all of God's people's said.
Amen.
Okay, well, we will move to item five, which is Citizens Forum, and I don't have a sheet, but I thought somebody was going to speak.
Item five?
Citizens Forum. Nobody? What's that?
So apparently who?
Oh, okay. Never mind. Okay, well, with that, then we will move from item five to item six, which is Council Inquiry. Does anybody have anything that they would like to bring up right now? I'll just give a quick update, just so I don't forget later. But me, John Blile, and our city administrator Kathy Ryer all went to the City of Conroe City Council meeting today, along with, I was very excited that he joined us, Representative Steve Toth. And so, long story short, we were there to do a presentation for the David Memorial Extension through the City of Conroe, obviously through their portion of the road. We gave them some compelling reasons that it made a lot of sense for the region as a whole, but also for the City of Conroe. We let them know basically how much money we thought their portion was going to cost and that we were there looking for some funding support. They are going to, you know, deliberate more on it internally, and I'm sure we'll have to circle back at, you know, a later date and ask them if they've given any more consideration to help them fund the project, but it's on their radar. I'm not saying that I walked away feeling super enthusiastic about how enthusiastic they were, but they, the majority of the council, including the mayor, showed support for the project and why they needed it. We had two members of the council that showed concern for the funding, which of course they're going to when you're asking them for $2 million. But, long story short, it was a good presentation, and it was really, it was really nice to have a state representative there in Steve Toth, just to show them that this is a bigger issue than just one city, one body, this is a regional project. So I thought it was great. So anyway, happy to answer any questions about that later if anybody's got any, but just want to keep that on y'all's radar and keep you up to date. We're still plugging away. Still trying to get there.
Thanks for going, and thanks for the update.
Yeah.
No problem. Okay, well, with that, then we will move to, oh, one of my favorite.
You say that only because of the time bars.
That's right. Item seven, Presentation of the Monthly MDD Report.
This is really our baseline report then for, you know, the projects that we approved in the last budget, so, but you can see the sewer inspection camera is already done. Woo-hoo, all right. And then just the brief updates from the previous meetings, because it's been a while. The October update, they approved the funding for the transfers to general fund, approved the sharing cost for Wood Forest Bank Stadium scoreboard for the CBB, and proceeding with the I-45 research intersection and adding the acceleration in November. We did not meet. I didn't see any other significant updates then in the rest of the long-term project.
Outstanding. Anybody have any questions for Councilmember Raymaker or Councilmember Fletcher as it relates to MDD? No? Okay, thank you for that, Councilman. We'll move on to item eight, which is Discussion and Possible Action to Adopt Following Resolution, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Shenandoah, Texas, providing for the appointment to fill the position of Place One and Place Five on the Shenandoah Planning and Zoning Commission. And I'm pretty sure that we have Place One back in the back. Can't tell because of the mask. I don't think we have Place Five here.
Make a motion, re-adopt the resolution, appointing James Pollard and Wes Stevens to their respective seats on P&amp;Z.
So I have a motion by Councilman Brott. I thought I heard a second by Councilman Raymaker. Do we have any discussion?
Appreciate the service.
Absolutely.
Really, we definitely.
Very much.
Appreciate the continued service by not only a P&amp;Z member, but a former mayor.
Right.
And council member.
These are both reappointments, just to be.
Yeah, they're reappointments. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes five O. Item nine, Discussion and Possible Action to Adopt Following Ordinance, an ordinance of the City of Shenandoah, Texas, Denying Distribution Cost Recovery Factor Rate Increase Request of Entergy, Texas, as stated in your agenda packet. Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve the written ordinance.
Second.
Have a motion by Councilman McLeod to approve. I have a second by Councilman Fletcher. Do we have any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five O. Item ten, Discussion and Possible Action to Adopt Following Ordinance, an ordinance of the City of Shenandoah, Texas, Admitting Chapter 14, Article 2, by Updating Building Codes, Providing for the Surfability of the Provisions of this Ordinance, Providing for the Repeal of Any and All Ordinance of Resolutions to the extent to the same are inconsistent with or in conflict with this ordinance, and Providing for an Effective Date.
Make a motion to approve.
Second, motion by Councilman McLeod to approve. I have a second by Councilman Gristi. Do we have any discussion?
Just to follow up for the public's knowledge, to ask for some background in this.
Yes, we had passed an ordinance a few years ago where we automatically, each year adopted the second most recent building code. Danny came to us this year and said, actually, this year, we want to go ahead and adopt on the, I believe it's the Residential Building Code, the 2020 version, and just out of good practice, I think we listed every single version this year that we're updating and the correct addition that we're following.
Do we have any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five O. Item eleven, Discussion and Possible Action to Adopt Following Ordinance, an ordinance of the City of Shenandoah, Texas, Admitting Chapter 74, Article 3, by deleting the present sections 74-111, 74-112, and 74-113, and adding new sections 74-11, 74-402.
If you will, this is what Joseph and his department refer to as a fog ordinance. It's fats, oils, and grease, and it regulates people putting fats, oil, and grease into our sewer system. Our current version that we're operating under is the 1993 Fog Ordinance, 27 years old. Joseph and I looked at that, along with Steve, and it needed big changes, so we took three or four other cities and modeled ours after that, and this will allow the city to properly regulate and keep those fats, oil, and greases out of our sewer system.
Do we have a motion? I have a motion by Councilman Gristi to approve. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second by Councilman McLeod. Do we have any discussion?
Has there been an ongoing problem at all, or?
Yes, this is an ongoing problem that we deal with pretty regularly. Either collection lines clogging up, and then we have to jet them out, and you'll get a solid plug of grease. We even budget annually to get our lift stations backed out to get all the grease and oil sucked off the top to prevent the problems it can cause downstream of the treatment plan. So it is a problem that we're dealing with regularly.
So Mike, and I read through this, and it obviously seems prudent, but I guess my only question would be, number one, two questions really. Number one, did we put some sort of focus group or polling of our current businesses to see how this would impact them? I mean, obviously, they're not going to like it if they have to spend more money to be, but I mean, did we get some feedback from them first? And then, secondly, do we have some sort of repeat offenders that we know are problems from certain businesses that we could have, give some heads up and communication with on this?
Okay, so to answer your first question, no, we didn't do any sort of polling. It is, it's well-known, especially, you know, these are restaurants, hospitals, those basically, if you're producing a lot of food, you know, when the building's built, when you follow the planning code, you're going to have grease interceptors, and those should be maintained and hauled regularly. Most of our businesses do, but we do have a handful that are either not getting them cleaned or we're not getting the manifests like we should. So there are some repeat offenders that we'll be able to focus on to hopefully, you know, the goal of this is to change behavior, improve behavior, and then reduce what we're having to deal with and spend money on treating this fog.
My only recommendation would be is maybe we send out some communication to all the businesses, and then maybe those repeat offenders, maybe we, a little special attention to, maybe a phone call or something. We want to work with our businesses as well.
Absolutely. This is the first step in the fog program. You know, we need to get the ordinance up to date, and Steve in particular, I've tasked him with, he's going to be going to restaurants, to these areas where we're not getting manifests, and he's going to be educating them about the changes, educating them about what they need to do, and it'll be a face-to-face.
Good.
And we're hoping to talk to everybody in the entire city.
Perfect. That's awesome. Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five O. Item 12, Discussion Regarding a Resolution Outlining Council Meeting Procedures. This is a discussion-only topic.
Counsel, this is a resolution from 2004 that just outlined basic council meeting procedures at that time. There are some things that are out of date. For example, our meeting time is no longer 7:30. The police department no longer delivers hard copy packets to your homes, you know, things like that that are long out of date. Also, Bill found some things that are either in the government code that are out of date or some things that are just unnecessary. So that, the red line will show you what those are, and this is for discussion. If you feel like you want to add something in particular or discuss it at greater length, you know, you have that option. And if you have any questions about any particular section, we can certainly answer those.
I know you'd sent out an email asking if we would want to consider changing the meeting time, and I was wondering how that went. I was thinking 6:30 myself, but I don't know what other folks were thinking.
I was quick to respond with seven, I'll be honest. It's tough for me sometimes to, and sometimes it's not, but sometimes it's tough for me to get here by seven, so.
Yeah, I've been a big fan of seven, and I talked to, a while back, we tried to do six, and the six, and we, you know, residents who can't, if they work in the medicine center, getting back here by six is, you know, almost impossible.
I know I hated it when one meeting was one time and the next meeting was another time.
We know MDD's at six, just leave council at seven, and if MDD, or if we need to do something, you know, joint meetings, those kind of things. And my thought is, council, is it seven, other meetings?
And the only change to the meeting time was from 7:30 to seven, so.
So just for clarification, quorum, when you say city, that includes any three of the six of us?
Yes. And my suggestion would be, if you read over this, it's not for a vote today, and have a question, send me an email. Kathy is correct. Some of these changes were to reflect real life, like we don't deliver things with the police department. Others were updates of the Texas Government Code, just on how we operate. It's pretty, I think these are pretty darn standard now, but if anyone has a question that we missed tonight, give me an email, and I'll address it.
Thank you, Bill. Okay, if nobody's got anything else, then we'll move on to item 13, which is Discussion Regarding MDD Funding of Future Water Projects. This is a discussion-only item.
Counsel, if you may recall, Byron Beavers, President of the MDD Board, had requested that council consider whether they anticipate going back to MDD for funding of future water projects. So this is, you know, not a commitment, it's a discussion. You could share your opinions if you have one. You'll see in your agenda report, one thing that is a factor in this discussion is the unknown. And when we budgeted for our four ACP line projects, after the budget process closed, Joseph discovered that there was ACP campus-wide at Memorial Hermann, so we need to deal with that as well. So that's, you know, we have our four projects that we knew about and budgeted for, and then along comes one that we didn't know about. So that's an example of something that we might approach MDD for funding in the future that we may not have planned for originally. So with those projects, we're not going to get too deep into the projects unless the council has specific questions, but the option is to either go to MDD for the additional funding or to postpone the projects that we budgeted for to do the full campus project. It is our preference to do them all, because they all need to be done. We had one of our lines leak recently, so that's an example of, you know, that time is of the essence on these projects. And if you have more specific questions, Joseph can help you with that.
So my thought is that all regular funding would come through the water budget, but that doesn't preclude if there's some emergency. I mean, part of it is, we want to have, certainly in the next three, four, five years, we're not going to have built up our reserve fund yet. So I could see in the next three, four, five years, some emergency comes up, some unplanned things comes up, going to MDD and asking for some money. My hope is that after five years, we will be in a position where that would really pretty much be off the table. We'd be in a position where we, the water and sewer fund would have money to handle emergencies, and in fact, that's the point of having that savings. And so that would let MDD totally focus on their broader scope of planning for their mission and their goals. That's sort of my thoughts, is in the next few years, we might ask them for something off the budget, but really moving forward, the idea long-term is that they can be self-sufficient.
Well, and I sort of look at it a little differently, Mike. I think operationally, the enterprise fund should sustain itself, but with capital, with our SIP, our capital improvement projects, based out on 10 years and even five years, on capital improvements that we have to do, I think it is appropriate to ask MDD to fund these. And just like the asbestos concrete pipe that we have right now, and we've got Memorial Hermann coming up, if we had to delay one of the other ones to do Memorial Hermann, if MDD didn't have the funding, I'd be willing to do that. But that's what the CIP is for, and my idea is to look at all this.
Right.
And capital improvements, I don't think are part of the enterprise funds balancing. I understand where you're, what you're saying, but that's just my opinion.
My thought is capital improvements are ongoing, and they're planning.
Correct, and that's why.
And, you know, it's a zero, at the end of the day, it's a zero-sum game. You've got, you've got money in MDD, it's got to, you know, it's going to be spent, be spent on streets, sidewalks, parks, recreation. We have a top enterprise fund, basically something that ought to run as a self-sustaining business.
True.
You know, that's, again, that's my sense of where the water and sewer ought to sit, is it ought to be able to be, you know, almost, not quite, but almost like an individual business.
And that'll take, what, five?
I think we're saying, I mean, I think the plan is to have five years. So my thought is, in the interim, absolutely, we should go free, but the plan should be in five years be in the position where.
And that's why we accelerated the asbestos pipe, to get it.
And I think everything's as it's always been. We request funding from MDD based on priority and regardless of the type of project.
I would agree with that. I think that, at the end of the day, I mean, you know, we understand what we want to do with the enterprise fund and what the objectives are there, but, I mean, we've got projects that, you know, that need funding that are going to come up, and in those events, I mean, I feel like we're going to need to be able to turn to MDD regardless of what you want to call that project, right? I mean, if we, I mean, we're coordinating out here basically water, but, I mean, in the event that we need to address these issues and get them resolved.
Sure.
I mean, it just makes sense.
Yeah, I just, I just see projects, what they are, you know, what we need at any particular moment of time, it's going to be changed in real time.
But as we plan, we need to plan for water and sewer to pay for the planned projects. Okay, that's, I thought everybody was on, okay. I'll make sure we're all on that.
Are we? Because I felt like Charlie was saying something different.
Charlie was actually coming a little bit different than I was understanding.
Yeah. I want to make sure that we got it clear. I mean, you still think that CIP should fall under, we should allow MDD to participate?
Absolutely. Because it's capital improvements.
And those are planned.
Planned, capital improvements, right. So if we can budget through the enterprise fund to pick these up, and even if we go with 70 or 30 or whatever, I wouldn't, I wouldn't hesitate a bit to ask them to do 50% or 25, 30, whatever. And my idea, I think capital improvements, based on the capital improvement plan that we've developed, should not encumber the enterprise fund right now while it builds up its reserve. And as we build an operating reserve, should we, as a council, ask for, or future councils even, ask for capital improvements out of the enterprise fund? Example, the wastewater treatment plant, they're never going to be able to read, put a new digester and a new clarifier in over there to expand it to get, can't think of the acronym now, the state of Texas.
TCEQ.
TCEQ, right, thank you. That's what, six, seven million dollars?
We got the loan for that.
And ready yet, but.
We'll get an update, right?
You sound like you're saying the same thing to me.
Well, okay, well, right, I'm sorry, but I mean, yeah, I think, absolutely, ask MDD. I'd rather ask them for that than sidewalks. Absolutely. I'm just saying, you know.
I mean, I probably would tend to agree more with Charlie on this, that I don't think it really matters what the project is.
Right.
That we ask them for. I don't want to pigeonhole ourselves to say, well, we're not going to ask for water, or we are going to ask for water.
Yeah.
I think that we have to evaluate that, where we're at at the point in time in the city. Obviously, you know, the news of having to redo the whole campus at Memorial Hermann wasn't something that was planned, that just came up. Do we want to go raise water rates? I sure as hell ain't going to vote for that. So, no, I think that, you know, we just have to utilize those funds accordingly to where we're at as a city. That's what they're there for. So I'm not going to pigeonhole ourselves to say, well, all this has to come out of the enterprise fund, or all this has to come from here. That's the purpose.
Right now, the enterprise fund doesn't have it, so it's.
But that's the point.
Right.
You want to pick and choose, and I don't think we're there. And even in five years, even in five years, we may not be there. So why are we trying to pigeonhole ourselves? I think we just have to take and look at the total funds that are available. MDD works at the whim of council and has to vote on the things that we request. They may not grant it, but at the same token, why wouldn't they? If it's for the best of the city, that's what the service of the board's for.
Agreed.
So I don't.
I think Ron hits it right on the money. Projects are projects are projects.
Correct.
I mean, it doesn't matter if they, you know, have water in front of them or sidewalks or whatever, I mean, it's the things that need to be addressed.
Let's look at the project and see what's best for the city, and that's what we determine those funds should be used for. I don't want, I don't want to get this, you know, to be a political issue between MDD and city council that we're utilizing water or not water or whatever, and I kind of feel that's kind of where this has gone, and no, we're just looking at projects that are best suited for the city, that's going to move the city forward, best for our residents and businesses.
Yeah, I don't think that's what it was, by the way. I think it really was a matter of communication. It was, okay, well, that's, if we're not going to continue to allocate 70% of the water and sewer funds needed to come from MDD, we need to know that for our planning for the MDD board for other projects.
Then we ask for 100%, and then see what they say.
Well, no.
Absolutely.
I mean, 100% is eligible, so I mean, it's not.
Yeah, exactly. Well, I think.
Memorial Hermann, we should ask, should ask for 100%.
And we could postpone one of the least ACP pipe, take it off the table for a couple of years to do Memorial Hermann, if we have to.
My only point was, I think this was simply about communication, was all it was. It wasn't about political, or, it was really direction, is all it was. So, and I think, I sort of like the direction of, hey, we're not saying, we're not saying no, we'll never ask you for money again, we're not saying yes, we'll never ask you for money again, as it relates to water and sewer. What we're saying is, is we'll evaluate projects, and if it's a project that we feel like MDD should participate in, then we'll come to you and ask for some money. I mean, if that's what I'm hearing council saying, which that's what it sounds like.
Well, I think, I think that's the purpose of MDD, is, you know, council gives them projects to consider, and I don't think MDD, you know, should be out trying to plan for projects that this, that this council isn't interested in doing.
Don't disagree with you, but having been on MDD, much like y'all, you also know there's a lot of projects on the table. So a lot of times, it's prioritizing and moving stuff around, so I do get the need for communication.
We've got a SIP and a wonderful ranking system.
Yeah.
Exactly, that's what the SIP is all about.
Okay, anybody else got anything on item 13, any more discussion? Okay. Well, with that, then, we will move to item 14, which is Discussion and Possible Action to Approve the Minutes of the September 23rd, 2020, and the October 14th, 2020, Regular Meetings.
I move they be approved as read.
I have a motion by the Mayor Pro Temp. I have a second by Councilman Gristi. Do I have any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five O. Item 15, Discussion and Possible Action to Ratify the Accounts Payable for October and November 2020.
Motion to ratify the accounts payable for November? Second.
I have a motion by Mayor Pro Temp. I have a second by Councilman Fletcher. Do we have any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five O. That brings us to item 16, which are the non-action items.
Counsel, we have just two items, and these are budgeted CBB programs. The first one is the 2021 Travel Click GDS Advertising for $60,000, and the second one is the 2021 Travel Click Digital Media Advertising for $30,000, and that's it.
Okay, that takes us to item 17, which is Citizens Forum. Did I have anybody sign up to speak? Ms. Courtney?
Come, yes, you know you can.
Be kind.
Yeah, make sure you put the timer on him.
Just don't unplug the mic, okay? Good evening, Mayor and Council, Wes Stevens, for the record, 28702 Holly Hill Drive. I'm encouraged that you're visiting the City of Conroe. I'm encouraged that you're visiting the City of Conroe and the extension of David Memorial. That's a, that's a dream we've long been chasing, to get that thing extended and have a north-south corridor in addition to I-45. Just something to consider, Grand Parkway, back in 1974, I think, was a, was a branch out of then developer Bob Lanier, and so it took him several decades to bring that to fruition. So keep charging. Thank you. We need that road.
Thank you.
Thanks, Wes. Thanks, Russ.
I won't be satisfied with 30 years, though. Thank you, Wes. Okay, item 18, which is the City Administrator Updates.
Counsel, I have a few updates for you. I'm going to start with the Wellman Loop. They recently had to relocate two ground transformers because there were conflicts with our water lines and our drainage, so they finished that, and they're into the final little pieces of the conversion now. They have to program some settings, and then they'll have their conversion complete, so I should have a little bit tighter timeline soon. I don't have it, but we're definitely in the home stretch, so that's good news. Recently, we had a concrete spill on Holly Hill, and city staff cleaned it up, and we're billing the concrete company, so that's just a little side note there. We also had an 18-wheeler hit one of our solar lights on Savannah. Repairs have been completed, and the company is paying for the damage. Luminary workshop, this Saturday, 9 to 12, in the Public Works Building, and the goal of this is to assemble the luminaries for all of our major entrances. So we're looking for anyone who wants to participate in that, any volunteers. And also segueing into the real luminary lighting, the Make Your Own Luminaries is going to continue this year, that's been successful. So starting on December 14, all the supplies will be out here, as they've been in the last several years, and people will be able to come pick their supplies up to put the luminaries on their own property. And finally, our Lighting of the Angels event was very successful considering the year that we've had. We got a lot of positive feedback, people were glad to have something reliable, you know, a tradition. We're guessing that we had maybe 300 people, which is a good turnout under the circumstances. We took a lot of precautions for the safety of the visitors to this event. We disinfected the tables and chairs, we had prepackaged food only, we did a lot of things to make it safer, make the people feel more comfortable. And finally, we had, it's hard to know exactly what goes into staging these events unless you're there, and we had a lot of staff involved. Public Works helped set this up. It took, you know, the day before, the day of, and the day after, and they actually did some work in advance the week before. So that was a huge help. The police department, other city staff members, we put together luminaries, we packaged food, so it was a real team effort. But I really want to emphasize Debbie's role in this event because she managed it from beginning to end, and she was on her feet for days. She coordinated with the volunteers and the civic club, and she kept us all on task. And she managed that event from beginning to end, so I really want to thank Debbie because that was no small feat. And that's all I've got.
Thank you, Debbie.
Here, here, Debbie.
Okay, with that, we will move into item 19, which is Council Inquiry, and we will start with Councilman Fletcher.
So I just want to say that I wasn't able to come to the Lighting of the Angels this year, but I have heard and have seen a lot of good, positive things, so I was just to come behind Kathy and say thank you to all the staff that participated, and all the volunteers, and especially the job that you did, Deb. Awesome, awesome job again. That's all I got. Merry Christmas.
Councilman Raymaker?
Well, much as I hate to hear that the loop is slightly delayed, I am proud of staff for being able to pick up the issue that was rectified before we went live, anyway, so thanks for that. And I just wanted to thank staff for the fantastic work this year. We've had challenging, challenging circumstances to save the lease this year, and I think y'all have done a great job, and I couldn't be happier with the work that you've done. So thanks so much, and Merry Christmas.
Councilman Grishti?
I'd like to echo both Councilmen Fletcher and Raymaker. I mean, the staff here has done a fantastic job. The fact that you guys, we've been able to do events while no one else around us can seem to pull that off is a tribute to you guys and what a great job y'all do. It's a great city to live in, everybody should be proud to live here. We've got great strategic partners, we've got volunteers, I mean, I think we ring the bell on a regular basis here, and I think that everybody should be proud of what they've put into this city for the year of 2020, which has been just an anomaly at best. But I want to say Merry Christmas to everybody, thank you for everything that you do, and looking forward to 2021.
Well said. Councilman McLeod?
Yeah, so everybody's stealing thunder on most of things.
Yeah, that's what's terrible, going last. Start exercising my mayoral right to go first.
That was excellent, Lighting of the Angels. Thank you to all the staff and Debbie for all the work you did on that. Like I said, lots of positive feedback on that, it was fantastic. Merry Christmas to everyone, we've got a new year coming up. I do want to shout out a big congratulations to both Woodlands High School and Oak Ridge High School for going to state band. It's the second time in a row for Oak Ridge. There's only 21 bands, I think, this year, somebody said 20, I think I counted 21 bands going to state, so, you know, two of the schools in Conroe Independent School District are part of some of the best bands in the state of Texas, so, congratulations.
Yeah, that is great.
Well, I'll echo everyone's thoughts on Lighting of the Angels. I also want to thank the civic club for all that they put into it, which was a lot. We had a lot of participation and very few squabbling, and it was, it was great. And the event was great, and when we picked it all up, that was great as well, so. I want to thank staff, Debbie, everybody.
So I'm going to start off by saying thank you to Blile Engineering. Today, as I was driving home, and I was trying to make it to my next stop, and thinking about how hectic my day was, and I started thinking about all the various meetings over this year, it seems like we've gone to, and y'all are quick to put together help, you're quick to give guidance, you're always there, Jennifer is a great resource, and I get it, I realize you're a strategic partner, that, you know, but, but I really do feel like, and, you know, maybe I'm, maybe I'm just, you know, overstating it, but I really do feel like y'all go above and beyond, so I appreciate the help that y'all give the City of Shenandoah. I know we're not your biggest customer, can't be, especially with the City of Conroe, is so excited to see you walk in the door, but, but y'all do go above and beyond to help us, and I do really appreciate it.
Mayor, we really enjoy working with you all. I'd like to echo what the council member said about the staff, because they're great. And as somebody said, it's been a tough year, but, you know, we'd be totally blessed to be working with you guys and your staff, you've done a great job. Thank you for making those comments.
You're welcome. And that was going to be my next statement, was, is then our city staff, for what you guys don't know, is each and every one of these meetings, our staff is, that's just extra workload, right? That's something extra on their desk, and not just Kathy, but Joseph a lot of times. We've even pulled Lisa into the fray a couple times and asked her for stuff, and so, everybody involved, thank you for going just a little bit above and beyond than what you normally would have to do for your day-to-day jobs, because at the end of it, it's going to, it's going to help all the residents and the businesses here in Shenandoah, so, thank you for that. It just, it made me think of it on the way home today, and I want to bring it up. I'm going to say the same thing everybody else said, a little bit different spin, you know, I think about the year that we had for 2020, and we really only missed, you know, one of our major, what I like to call sort of our, you know, our major events in the Easter egg hunt, right? We missed, we missed obviously our National Night Out, which is big, I'm not saying it's not, and we missed our newly created event, which was our Montgomery County.
The Expo.
Expo, yeah, which I loved both of those last year, was looking for bigger and better this year.
David's Dream Run 2.
What's that?
David's Dream Run 2.
Yeah, we don't put that on, we just participate. So that's not necessary, but yes, I love David's Dream Run 2, but when you think about the big ones, right, the Easter egg hunt, Fourth of July, Halloween, and Lighting of the Angels, kind of those four big pillars, what I, at least what I consider our pillar events, we really only missed one. And so that's really saying a lot for the city staff, civic club, Debbie, of course, Ms. Debbie, who kind of teeters back and forth between both those two, and then our council members that are on civic club as well. So I think, I think while, you know, 2020 was, as everybody says, a challenging year, I just want to commend everybody for really making it as good as it could be for our residents, because we say it all the time, this is what makes Shenandoah different, right? What makes Shenandoah different is what we do for our residents and the way we try to bring the community together. That's what we need to be focused on, and I feel like we stayed focused on it in 2020, and I want to stay even more focused in 21. So, you know, going into 21, I want to continue to focus on what's, what makes Shenandoah different. There are a lot of cities who have great budgets and produce revenue, and they do a great job taking care of the streets, but Shenandoah is, what makes us different is our community involvement. And so going into 21, we need to be even bigger and better, and that's what I want to focus on when we get there. So thank you to everybody for all the efforts in 2020, and let's make it even better in 21. So, anybody got anything else? No? All right, well, with that, then, thank you, everybody, for coming, residents, staff, strategic partners.
Merry Christmas, everybody.
Merry Christmas, everybody, and we will see you in 2021. We'll adjourn the meeting at 7:45. Night, everybody.